Okay, it is 4:30 on May the 6th. I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin with a moment of silence followed by pleasure of allegiance. Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, then if we could have a roll call, please.
Tom Eggers?
Here.
Wayne Barahona?
Here.
Pete Hamel?
Here.
Tom Brewster?
Here.
Brad Hent?
Here.
Okay. We'll be on to item two, the approval of the agenda. We have a long agenda today, hopefully we'll go through that rather quickly. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve that, please.
So moved. Support.
All right, roll call, please.
Hamel? Was that an I?
Yeah.
Barahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Okay. All right, this time we have time for a public forum. Were there any written comments from anyone? All right, we do have...
Mayor, I just got a message from somebody listening to me. I can't hear you very well, so...
Okay. All right. We do have Kerwin and Kathy Sturler here today, so please step forward and I've already stated your names, so it's not necessary to state it again.
Kathy Sturler.
Yeah.
Kerwin Sturler.
Okay.
The purpose of our visit here today is to clear up any questions council may have for us as to why we have not done any work on the proposed properties repurchased. When this process started, we made it very clear to the city our intent for both, we would sell immediately upon completion within less than 12 months. The Sunset Motel property, we would rent and add mobile homes to. We did not foresee the issues with legalities pertaining to the titles of each property. Our expectations were to have a marketer willing and still are to take some risk. The risk the city is asking of us is unreasonable. There is not an estate open on either property when there were clearly heirs, has clearly no value. However, the heirs still need to be addressed to receive a quitclaim deed. This would reduce, not eliminate, our risk. This would give us a marketable title. It is, it still would leave idle, and we may still have difficulty selling it, but it would be something we could live with. The Sunset Motel is a huge mess. First of all, there is a will that we did not have the privilege of reviewing until April 10th. The will was clearly signed by three, the city has corresponded with the execsure, her attorney, and a third party in the states representing her. The will of David Enfield seems to be valid. Therefore, an estate needs heirs coming in the future to sue both the city and us. Granted, the heir of the property is in a foreign country that still, we have invested approximately $42,441. Over $4,600 of that is for attorney fees for these two properties. We would like to proceed as quickly as possible. The city, when we submitted our bids, the city accepted them in good faith that we would follow through. By submitting our bid, we in turn accepted that the city, in good faith, would provide us with a market. Now with that being said, we just got word that there was a meeting between the attorneys, Sam. Now, Micah?
Micah, another third-party lawyer, and our lawyer Katie, our lawyer Katie, so. And it sounded pretty positive. I wasn't able to talk to Katie, but you said it sounded like there was some positive new...
Progress, progress.
...progress being made on that, so.
The only reason we wanted to state this is because we're getting flack from...
People look down, saying, "Why haven't you done anything? How long does it take?"
Right.
And this is why we wanted to clear it up. We want it cleared up. We want to do the work, we want to get done. We certainly don't want to be working all summer on this and not out in the boat. So, that's why we wanted to let the city know that we are trying, Micah, Sam, and Micah, they're trying also, but it's a mess.
But it's like a corn maze with no way out, is what we've been hitting dead ends every way. We say, "Well, maybe this will work," and then, no, that won't work. So it's back and forth and back and forth. And yeah, it's not for lack of trying on everybody's part, so. But we did want to clear up for the public and the city council and everybody that...
The city's working very hard, trying to get it cleared up, as are we. We're trying to reach a mutual agreement. We did an extension just this week again, trying to figure out how to clear it up so we can at least, when we're done, have something that we can sell versus, you know, I don't think anybody wants to put their house up and say, "Okay, I'm going to demolish this and hmm, there's an heir that might come after it and sue me, and I might lose everything." And that's part of the reason for all of this.
Okay.
All right?
Yep. As is our new custom, we don't, we won't respond at this point. It is on the agenda down the road, so, and we will have to take a little action in terms of extending this, and we'll deal with it at that point.
Okay.
And we will continue to work together on this.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Tom, you're on the agenda later, so I'm assuming you have nothing to say now. And again, there were no written comments?
Mayor, I believe I have everybody unmuted, so...
Okay. Those that are listening or in on Zoom, are there any public comments from any of you at this time? If so, please state your name and go ahead and speak now. Not hearing or seeing anybody popping up on the screen, I'm going to assume that there are no more public comments, so I'd like to move on then to item number four, the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion to approve that at this time.
So moved. Support?
Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Moving on then to old business. Let's begin then with the second reading of the ordinance amending the water rates. I don't intend to read all of that again. Have we had any comments or anything?
You could waive the third reading, or you could just approve second reading.
Okay.
I make no motion to approve the second reading and move it on to the third reading, correct?
Move it on to a third, correct.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call on that, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Just one comment there, part of that agenda, or that consent agenda was accepting the retirement of Daryl Burns, who has served for 25 years, a quarter of a century, on the Board of Adjustment. And I just want to publicly thank him now for his many years of service and wish him the best as he moves forward towards retirement. Thank you, Daryl. Moving on then to old business, let's begin then with the second reading of the ordinance amending the water rates. I don't intend to read all of that again. Have we had any comments or anything?
You could waive the third reading, or you could just approve second reading.
Okay.
I make no motion to approve the second reading and move it on to the third reading.
Not waive it?
No.
Okay, second that. Discussion on that motion. Councilmen that are listening through the Zoom, did you hear Brad's motion? Pete and Tom?
Yeah, it's to approve the, to approve the second reading and ask for a third, correct?
And move it on to a third, correct.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no discussion, we'll take a roll call on that, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Moving on then to the follow-up on the city audit. Sam, I'm going to let you speak and address this first, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, so let me pull this up real quick. Recently, we had a conference call with Winter and Stave. There were several of us from the city that represented the city on that call, Angie, Brad Hent, Mayor Gils, and myself. Winter and Stave, once again, I first of all should ask, Todd, is Winter and Stave on the line? Do you see a Spencer number on there?
I do not see their number.
All right. So, Winter and Stave has again apologized for the slowness of the audit. They are not opposed to breaking the agreement. They would like to have another opportunity. Arvin Drubinka would be taking the lead on the audit, and Jennifer Mackey would be assisting him. You have several options to consider. You can accept the April 22 letter, take no further action. You could send a letter like the one attached, signed by the mayor and I. You could solicit proposals for a new auditor and review those proposals before breaking off the current agreement, or you could break off the current agreement and then solicit for proposals. I put the minutes in there from a discussion from neighboring community of Cherokee. They recently switched auditors. That was based on price. And Winter and Stave's quote to Cherokee was significantly higher than ours. Of course, they have, they have a lot more FEMA funds than we do because of the flooding, but it's still a similar-sized community. So my recommendation would be either the first or second bullet point, either vote to accept the letter or to send a letter or response like the one that's attached in your packets.
All right. In order to further discussion, I'd like to begin by taking a motion on recommended action from Sam. So we can open it up for, yeah, discussion, as I said.
I would make the motion that we send them this letter that Sam has drafted up, so it's in writing. They know where we stand on the audit. We had a good conversation that night with them, and I think to get somebody to do it with everything that's going on in the world right now, I think is going to be tough. So I would entertain the motion to draft this letter and send it. Then they know where we officially stand as a council.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there further discussion on that motion? Tom or Pete, I'm just making sure to give you guys time, making sure you understand what we're, hearing everything we're talking about. And hearing nothing, I can assume one of two things, either you have no, you have no issues with it, or you're not hearing what we're saying.
I'm all right to go ahead with the vote.
Okay. And Pete?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, then I'd like to take a roll call, please.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, and that motion carries. Item C, consider next steps regarding the contract for the sale of the 1023 Garfield Avenue property and the 1401 South Second Avenue property. Sam, do you have something you'd like to share with us at this time?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments earlier, and I've had many good conversations with Kerwin and Kathy throughout this time. Had I known what I know now, what I know now, I would have asked Micah to extend the abstracts on all three properties and to recommend that to you. Micah, last year, asked me what I wanted to do, what my recommendation would be, and based on my prior experience in Cherokee with two what I thought were similar properties, I said, "No, let's just offer a due diligence period." But walking away from your property and leaving town, for example, DJ's in my two Cherokee examples, is different than dying. And that added a layer of complexity to the Garfield and Sunset issues that I, or properties that I did not anticipate. Also at that time, I wanted to, recognizing the city's financial situation and that these funds were coming from local option, sales tax, and general fund, I didn't, I didn't know how much we might have to spend resolving the thermocell building, and I was hoping to save the city money. At 3:00 PM today, Micah had a meeting with David Hanson of Fayette, Iowa, who's, and Katie Morgan was in on that meeting as well, and I think we should do what Mr. Hanson recommends and move forward. Our recommendation, I believe they're very close to an agreement. I think the meeting went, went well. So I'd like to yield to Micah to see if he has anything to add, but I think our motion today can be to affirm the time extensions and move forward. Any questions for me?
Not at this time for me.
Is Mike on?
Mike, are you, are you listening in? Are you able to comment at this time?
I am listening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think Sam has summarized the current situation. At this point, this organ, by knowledge, has had time to confer with their clients about our discussion with Mr. Hanson. I think they'll just wait, they'll just have that opportunity so we don't get the part from the worst. But I would echo the statement of Sam, that I think it was a positive meeting. We have the opportunity to keep moving forward together to address some concerns that have been brought up.
Could you, just for those that perhaps don't know, speak to the Attorney Hanson and his role in all of this?
Pardon? I could not hear that.
Could you speak to the role of Attorney Hanson in, in this discussion, why, why he's being brought in?
Oh, certainly. We thought it would be appropriate just to get their voice, to have some speed on a way to resolve, I think, the title issue. Mr. Hanson, known throughout Iowa, was being very knowledgeable in title situations. That's just good to have, another opinion, and he lends his services to us for a very reasonable speed, so to say that.
So at this time, Sam is making a recommendation that we extend the discovery period in order to have further discussion, I would entertain a motion along those lines.
I'll move to extend the deadline.
Support? Okay. Tom Eggers is one that came in ahead of that, so we have a motion, we have support for it. Any further discussion? Any questions for Micah or Sam?
Hi, Mike, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The amendments are linked. The amendments that I signed on Saturday are linked, that's what you're approving. All right, yeah.
Okay.
The two time extensions are linked in the packets. That's what you're approving.
Everybody understands that? Okay? If there is no further discussion, we'll have a roll call on that, please.
Barahona?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Then moving on to item 5D, the zoning ordinance amendment. Go ahead, Sam.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Micah, if that's okay?
Yep.
Micah, I think we should probably ask that the hearings stay open and this be continued again. Would you agree? This is the rezoning item.
Yeah, I think that would be consistent with our prior discussions with the applicant.
Okay. All right. So we will just leave that on the table, so to speak?
Yeah.
We don't need a motion or anything like that that's open already, and so...
Micah, a motion is not necessary, correct? It can, it can just be moved to May 20.
That is correct.
All right. Unless I hear objections, then we will just do that.
Okay.
Moving on then to our new business, under there, six, item 6A, authorization to solicit bids to sell salvage rights for the corn crib on South Fifth Avenue. Piece of property that is dilapidated, there are, there is interest in, from people in the salvaging the wood out of it, which would eliminate the city having to clean it up. Any other things you want to add to that, Sam?
No, sir.
Okay. So we'll entertain a motion for that?
So moved. Support?
Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hent?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Item B, the resolution of implementing the new ambulance rates, you have those in your packet. Take a, an, a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Eggers?
Support.
All right, roll call, please, on that one.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
All right, item 6C, we are going to table that one, because they are still searching for a candidate for that role. So that will be tabled, hopefully, May 20, we may have some more news. Tricia, is there anything you'd like to add at that point? I see you are muted. Todd, if you could unmute Tricia? There you go. Tricia, anything you need to add?
I'm unmuted. Yeah, so we kind of slowed down the process as well, since we're not sure when we'll be able to hold events again, so we're just going to regroup and step back a little bit and relook at the process we'll go through.
Okay, very good. So we look forward to hearing from you in the near future.
Absolutely. Hopefully, hopefully by May, May 20 is our next council meeting.
Great, all right. All right, moving on then to our reports. We have with us Tom Foose from Perspective Insurance. Tom, you're going to report on our health insurance package.
Thank you, Mayor. And council, thank you for your business, we appreciate it. So we're going to refer to a couple things in your packets. There's a very colorful handout with a spreadsheet, if we could look at that. So if you'll remember, a year ago, we made some changes to the health plan and added a health savings account, a qualified high deductible plan that allowed city employees to have a health savings account. That was really quite well-received. All but nine employees went with that option. So the other nine were on a buy-down plan. And if you look at that handout, you'll see a yellow box to the left that shows a 250-500 deductible. That's the plan that was being bought down to for those nine individuals. Being bought down from, if you look to the center of the page roughly, to column A, that's the plan that was being used to buy down. We were using the services of a company called Oxyant to manage that. So Sam and I started discussing, gosh, I think probably in January, the renewal, and as soon as we became aware that Wellmark was making some changes on their health insurance plan offerings, so the plan that was being used for the HSA, or the Qualified High Deductible Health Plan that was being used, is in column B. It's a 4,500 deductible for an individual, 9,000 for a family. And you can see that the out-of-pocket maximums were the same as the deductible. In 2020, Wellmark decided that that silver high deductible plan was going to stay the same, 4,500 deductible with the 9,000 for a family, but they raised the out-of-pocket maximums to 6,750 for an individual, 13,500 for a family. So we decided that we should be looking at some other options. We looked at other carriers to see what they could offer, didn't find anything competitive, and decided that, well, we want to keep the 4,500, 9,000 out-of-pocket. So we asked Oxyant if they could do a buy-down plan from column D, which is the bronze Wellmark plan, which is a 6,750 individual, 9,000 family. You notice that the out-of-pocket maximums are the same, 6,750 and 13,500. They said, yes, they could do that. We could buy down that plan to what the current column B, 4,500, 9,000. So we put together quotes for that, and so the proposal is, is that we would use a buy-down and that all employees would move to a Qualified High Deductible Health Plan. So there'd just be one plan, Qualified High Deductible Health Plan, being bought down to the 4,500, 9,000 deductibles. So again, we'd be using Oxyant to do that. So there's a lot of busy work on this, this page, but what I want to do is take you right down to the bottom of the page, and you'll see that the premium, if you look at the premium, you're going to see that the current plan offerings, if we just renewed as is, you can see what the annual premium was, 449,000. The current, renewing those current plans would be 501,000. If we go with the bronze plan, the premium is 402,021. City's budget is in column E. You can see what the city budgeted. So in the green box below that, you can see what, what the outcome is, is the maximum liability for the buy-down, that's buying it down from the 6,750, 13,500 to 4,500, 9,000. The maximum liability is 114,750, if you follow that. Oxyant says the average number of people hitting their out-of-pocket maximums would be about 30% of those people. So if you go clear down to the bottom, what we did was, we, we put a bunch of ideas together here. The budgeted savings in the premium, you can see that that's 28,868, so less premium. The employee contribution is 10% this year. That number is showing there. There's two employees that aren't on the health plan, and you can see what that saves. And then based on 30% hitting the maximum out-of-pocket, you can see, if 100% of the employees, it was 115,000, so you can see that the savings is 72,797. So overall, the cost to the city based on 30% hitting the out-of-pocket maximum is about 174,000 from last year, so 174,000. So we were pleased that we could work that out. It's going to allow the employees to all have that health savings account, and of course, the advantage to that is to use pre-tax dollars to pay for those benefits, including vision and dental. So in the end, one of the things that, that we'd be looking at is employees that aren't on the Qualified High Deductible Health Plan currently have an out-of-pocket maximum of 750 for an individual. uh, currently have an out-of-pocket maximum of 750 for an individual, 1500 for a family. The net out-of-pocket, after the, the city's contribution to the health savings accounts of these employees, the net difference would be 950 for an individual and 1900 for a family. So that's the net difference. Now, the one thing that you, you need to look at is, is with an HSA and those monies going into those HSA accounts, you access, access those right away, those are first-dollar things, you don't, there's no copay, there's no, you're, you're accessing those funds immediately. I think the city is making contributions to those accounts on a monthly basis.
Okay, period, twice a month.
Twice a month, okay. So we're pleased, um, looks like a lot of potential savings to the city. It moves everybody to one plan, it's consistent with all employees. I think that's a good thing. Sam, was there anything else you wanted me to? Oh, that's good, all right.
So, Tom, am I reading this correctly with the, all these numbers on this page?
Yeah.
The bottom line says 137,993 dollars and some change is the estimated cost decrease for fiscal year 2021 compared to fiscal year 1920. That, that's the savings we're looking at by doing this plan?
Uh, well, clear at the bottom, 174, 373. Do you see that way down in the left-hand corner?
There's just one sheet, correct? Uh, we're looking at?
Yep, that's the right sheet.
Way down in the lower left-hand corner.
Yeah, mine's 137.
I have way 137.
Oh, do I have the wrong one? Ah.
My, my number was more conservative than yours, because I, because I removed the amount regarding the, um,
Two people.
The buy-down. Because I, um...
Sorry about that, I...
Yeah, so, act, our actual savings is 174, but what I, what, and that's if everything goes right. Uh, but if everybody hits their maximum out-of-pocket, then our savings is less. So I went with the, the lower number, which is still a good number. About 137 is, is, uh, is what we're saving. And that's not counting the savings that we've already realized by having 19 of our 31 employees switch last year to the, uh, to the HSA.
That's right.
Yep, thank you. Sam and I had lots of emails going back and forth. Versions changed, so...
Really?
Thank you for understanding.
Really? Nothing unusual for Sam. All right, any other questions for Tom?
Did anyone else hear another voice, uh, uh, call here?
I heard what sounded like maybe a woman's voice in the background, I don't know. I didn't hear, I didn't...
Tom, this is Todd, I heard that as well, but I couldn't figure out where it was coming from.
Oh, just part... I think that's my fault. Thanks, Pete.
Okay.
We're here to...
All right, any other questions for Tom Faust?
That's for me, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, appreciate all your work.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend a, a motion to authorize the Wellmark renewal with Perspective as our agent.
Okay. I'll entertain that motion. So moved. And do we have support for that?
Support.
Any further discussion? Regarding the motion? Roll call, please.
The, the one thing, I guess, the one thing I wanted to clarify with you, Sam. Uh, in, in, enacting this, this is, in fact, moving the, everyone over to this plan. It's no longer, uh, it is now mandatory, is that correct?
I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
That is correct. The, uh, the others, the seven union employees were to be moved per the collective bargaining agreement that's already been signed. So, there's two, there's two non-union employees that would be moved over to the, the new, the new plan.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, we'll have a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
All right, that motion carries. And Sam, we're now up to you, if your city managers report, do you have anything you'd like to?
Oh, we got life and disability.
Life and disability.
Oh, I jumped one, sorry. There we go. Sure, yeah, Joel, you've been waiting all this time. I scratched that off. All right, we have with us Joel Gasing from, uh, Gasing Vatterwell Agency. Uh, go ahead, Joel.
Thank you for having me here today, Council. Um, just, first of all, I want to give a quick update on our current life and disability insurance policy that we have in place. Uh, if you remember, I was here about a year ago, and we, uh, put a new policy in force with UNAM. Um, we kind of revamped our benefits, increased some of our coverage, lowered some of the standards in order to qualify for that coverage. Um, I think it was kind of good timing that we did that, because we had a few claims this year from some of the employees. Um, so unfortunately, we had the claims, but fortunate that we had the insurance. And the whole claim process, I thought, went pretty smoothly, um, got the employees or their families paid pretty quickly. Um, and I, I know they were grateful for the coverage that the city has in force on them. Um, and there's nothing that we really need to do at this time, our rates are locked in for two more years here yet. We had a three-year rate guarantee. Um, and I think so far, I've been pretty satisfied, and I think the city has been too, with the service that UNAM's provided and, uh, the coverage that we have with them. Um, and also, I kind of wanted to bring forth at this time, I think there's some handouts in your packet. Um, something that Sam and I have been working on for a few months here. And, uh, that is a life insurance policy for the emergency services personnel. Uh, we sat down and had meetings with some of the department leaders. Um, I know some of you guys are in on that, too, and I think we have some, some strong support, uh, from those leaders as well. Um, we're kind of looking at this as a benefit for recruitment and retention of employ, of, of members. And then also, just protection for their, for the members and their families in case something tragic would happen, um, to them. So what we're proposing is a $25,000 base life insurance plan and a $25,000 accidental death and dismemberment plan. And both of those would be, uh, 24 hours around-the-clock coverage, um, for the members. And then also, on top of that, a $25,000 AD&amp;D for in the line of duty. Um, so potentially, if a member would pass away while on the job from an accident, we'd be looking at $75,000 worth of life insurance coverage. Um, we quizzed this out with a few different carriers, and who came back as best for us was the standard. And, uh, the price that they quoted us at was a little over $530 a month for 54 members of the EMS. Uh, and we did not include full-time city members. Um, and they guaranteed that rate for three years if we take this out. And another reason that we're kind of looking at getting this going here, um, is that there already has been a rate increase on the plan because of the coronavirus. And, uh, since we started this before this all hit, um, they're willing to lock in our previous rates up if we have a July 1st start date. Um, so, we get the old rates since we started this earlier, but if we do this next year, we don't really know. Um, there's some uncertainty what the life insurance market's going to do here, if we can see a rate increase, uh, a big jump. We don't know at this time. So that's kind of one of the reasons why we're moving forward with this as well. Um, I think in the packet, there might be some letters of support. Um, the trend is that a lot of cities are offering this for, or starting to offer this for their EMS departments. Um, and I think this is a good benefit to have, like we said, for retention and also for protection of members.
Are there any questions for Joel at this time?
Yeah, a question of clarification, Pete. Uh, how many members does the monthly, uh, fee cover?
54 members.
54, thank you.
And those are non-full-time people, those are the, yeah, basically covers the volunteers of any emergency services, as I understand it.
Yep.
And have to be over the age of 18, that was the other qualification there. Sam, you have something to add?
So we're, we're not seeking a, action on this item today, we're introducing the concept. And we have, we have until July 1 to either accept or reject the, the quote. A little bit of history is important for you to know, is, is, we started this earlier this year. Joel moved much faster than I anticipated, I had mentioned to him one day, can you get us a quote for budget planning purposes for next year's budget? And, because we had been talking internally about how we could, uh, encourage and incentivize, uh, and, and help cover the risk that our volunteers, uh, take on when they do this. One of the ideas that had been tossed about was IPers, which is being done in a few other communities. Uh, and that's, um, a little bit more complicated to undertake. Another idea was the life insurance, which is much more common. I didn't link it on this, uh, I will link it to the next meeting, a whole list of communities that are doing the, the life insurance for, I intended to link it today, but I don't see it. But there is a list of, uh, a large list of communities in Iowa that are... We, we happened to receive a quote a week before the world changed, and, um... The standard? Yeah. The standard agreed to, to hold premiums to go up. So, city managers do not like to bring forward un, unbudgeted items. I think this is something that the fire department and EMA, uh, had, uh, pay increases slated for this coming year, they're willing to forego those. Uh, SCAT does not have a pay increase, uh, slated for this, uh, coming year. And, so I, I think we, I think this is, this is affordable, and it's something that we... It's a meeting.
Any questions for Sam at this time? Hearing none, we will receive that for information and wanting. Thank you, Joel, for that information, and for your, your work as well. Okay, Sam, now we are up to you, city manager report, do you have anything else you'd like to comment on? All right, I'm going to start with Pete. I'm not sure what happened to Pete, Tom, do you?
Uh, nothing specific, except just, uh, want to lift up the SEC, uh, organization and board. Uh, they're really doing some creative things, uh, to benefit us, the community, specifically, uh, businesses in our community. And you'll be hearing, uh, as things continue to affect job roles.
All right, thanks, Tom.
I would echo that. I would say...
Very good, thank you. All right, Councilman to my left, any additional comments from you?
I do have one. I've had bad comments about people, uh, from people. When there is a cruise night and you squeal your, you drive recklessly, you deserve a ticket. That's what the cops are doing. The cruise night, you want. The cops are doing their job. The sheriff deputies, the highway patrol are doing their job. That night is not a free pass to spin your tires, drive recklessly, and do inappropriate things with your vehicle. So if you get a ticket, you probably deserved it. And the cops are doing their job. That's my soapbox.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Uh, I also want to, uh, thank Daryl Burns for his work on the Board of Adjustment, and mention there is now a opening on important board.
Very good, thank you, Sean.
Wayne, anything you'd like to add?
Going off what Brad said, the cruise night thing is, it's an interesting idea, it's, it gives us something to do. But we have seen total, uh, and reckless abandonment of the recommended social distancing practices that occur while these, uh, cruise nights are going on. And, I, you know, me and my family, we love going out to watch it, but when you start getting big groups, and we've seen them in the AT&amp;T parking lot, and we've seen them in various other places around town, you're getting these big groups together, it, it, uh, it goes against the spirit of what's going on, which is finding a fun thing to do while still maintaining effective social distance. So I would want to make it a point of, of reminding everyone here that, uh, this is a great thing, a, a great tradition that we're bringing up, but it needs to be done in a responsible manner.
Well said, thank you. I have a couple of things, uh, we have another 25-year anniversary that, uh, is worth noting. As of May 1st, Todd Wood, uh, is celebrating his 21st, 25th anniversary serving as one of our police officers, and so my thanks and congratulations to Todd for his many years of work here, we appreciate it. And then also, uh, the week of May 3 through 9, 2020, is the 51st Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and endorsed by all its members throughout the US and Canada, and 59, this week is a time of celebration and reflection on the importance of the clerk's office. And Angie has no idea this was coming.
I didn't.
Are you getting...
Administrative Assistance Day was last week, so somebody catches me on the card.
In 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed a proclamation that officially declared Municipal, Municipal Clerks Week in the first full week of May. And in 94 and in 96, President Bill Clinton also signed proclamations confirming that. And so I, at this time, I just want to say, on behalf of the city council, as well as the citizen Sheldon, I want to say thank you for your commitment, Angie, to your public, to the public service and all the hard work you do to make this community better. Uh, every time I go through the budget, I am just amazed at the numbers and the work that, uh, it actually comes out at the end. And, uh, so, I have a small token of our appreciation, my appreciation here for you, I will give that to you at the end of the meeting, but thank you very much, on behalf of, uh, the citizens of this community. Did you get all that down on the minutes? All right, uh, that's all I have. Uh, if there's nothing further?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Very good.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
And we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, thank you, Angie.
Yep.